Okay, this is the Board of, yeah, yeah, Board of the Regular. Planning Board meeting of May 7th. This meeting is being recorded.
Motion on the minutes.
Motion.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Pat. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous or four? Okay, next is eighty-one Ps. We've got one just, one that just came in.
It says none and none.
Yeah, it just, we, I just brought it in now.
Just came in, yeah.
Uh, my name is Elizabeth Minini, Gary Aaron Haulman. This is eighty-one P up on Purchase Street. This parcel Y and this big parcel back here, uh, was all one piece and then, oh, I'm sorry. This was an undersized lot here, these two parcels, and this is own, and that my, uh, the applicant has purchased this parcel and owns this parcel, so he's looking to combine these two parcels to create a conforming lot and then these two parcels as a not, non-buildable lot at this point in time. So the eighty-one P is really just-
Y and Z?
Y and Z.
For Y and Z.
And then X and W?
No, I'm sorry.
Turn it around.
Z and W together. Z and W are gonna create the buildable lot right now.
Correct. And Y and X.
Which parcel Y?
Y and X are, no, Y and X are gonna be the separate non-buildable lot.
Okay.
At this time.
At this time.
It's endorsing us.
It sounds like a ZBA thing.
It does, huh?
I'll make a motion for, uh, what is it, Y and W? Y?
Y and Z. Y and Z.
E and W.
No, it's Z and W.
You just need to-
Z and W, okay.
You just need to endorse the plan.
I got too many.
Yes, I made a motion, sorry.
Well, no, but you specified specific lots. You're approving the eighty-one P plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay, yeah, there's gonna be two, two lots and the non-buildable and the buildable lot.
At this time.
Okay. They have a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? None of those in favor? Opposed? Next is certificate of-
Minutes, I claim.
Endorsement.
So this is, uh, the Arianna Estates off of Touch Street. It was approved back in June of 2018. Uh, they were unable to record the Mylar within the six-month required period because they were still working on purchasing the land for the land swap. That was part of what we needed to do. So, uh, we're just looking for endorsement that, and this is the exact same plan, um, that you signed back in June.
So we don't need to sign it again? You just need to-
No, it's a certificate of no change that you need to endorse.
Another endorsement.
Motion.
Right.
Moved by Pat. The signed-
Well, just a certificate, 'cause we've already signed it.
You're signing, you're signing here.
Oh.
The undersigned being the majority of the planning board. The town of Milford hereby certify that the approval of this plan has not been modified, amended, or rescinded, nor the plan changed.
We didn't modify it, they didn't modify it either, correct?
Correct. Nobody's modified it.
Motion, okay.
Okay.
It's just the time period lapses with the registry.
Moved by Pat. Seconded by Joe. Signed the-
Thanks. He's behaving better than these guys do.
Why his scribble took you five minutes like that?
Ah, I changed it. I used to scribble, I changed it. It smells amazing. I'm gonna start scratching. Old age. Yeah, that pen doesn't like to work. You know? How Joe's got one.
Franco always had extra pens.
Franco always had new pens.
Jimmy Griffith, Jimmy Griffith had every pen. You wouldn't have one back.
Oh, yeah, he took them. He took them off.
Jimmy Griffith never gave a pen back.
Well, if one was almost empty, he'd swap them, so you wouldn't know.
He did it for me. Said somebody needs to do it.
What is it doing?
Why I always have extra boxes over there?
Five seven.
Five seven.
Five seven.
Now we can go to number three.
Aw, I jumped over there, I'm sorry.
Did not participate. I was gonna suggest it, actually.
Oh, sure, sure. I suggested it before, or is it on and on?
I did, I actually did it by mistake, too.
Audience slip.
Okay, uh, amended site plan for One National Street.
Good evening. Joe Spantinelli is on behalf of the after.
Here's Mark.
Jason, both of whom were here last week, well, I think even two weeks ago. So what has transpired over the last couple of weeks is an attempt to get the site plan in compliance with the suggestions that were made by the board relative to getting a better view of the overall project. So the site plan was originated primarily for the installation of new loading docks, but at the same time, we talked to you a little bit about what's going on on the east end of the property where there's gonna be some major demolition. Um, I think the board felt comfortable getting an idea at the time of showing the area with a little bit more detail and what the demolition would look like. So at the suggestion of your staff, we've incorporated a separate sheet within the context of the site plan that includes, uh, some, uh, information regarding the manner in which the demolition will occur, what the elevations will be like at the foundation level where the building is being taken down, and how that particular area, which will be a hole in the ground, will be secured and, um, managed over the course and conduct of the rest of the site plan going on. So I think we've given you an update on that information. Um, there was some question at one point about the location of fire hydrants. We've worked all that out with the chief and how they're gonna be maintained. He's passed his approval on it. And, uh, again, I think today we, we had sent in some sketches about the demolition plan, but, um, I think that the suggestion was made and it's been incorporated that it actually get placed within the site plan. So there's a separate sheet there that shows that information. Okay, I'm sorry, and the truck turning radius has had to be placed in, and that's been done and added to the plan also.
I'm sorry, Joe, they were a separate, uh, civic plan.
Civic, right.
You gave them to the board at the last meeting, right.
Yeah, Mike's memo that's in your packet, uh, had made the suggestion about, uh, the, the foundation drops, and so those elevations have been added, uh, to the plan set on, what is it now?
Five point one.
Five point one. Sheet number five point one, that gives the details of those elevations, and then adds the notes, um, about the demolition.
Okay.
So between Mike's memo, I did see the email from the chief signing off on, uh, the plan with the hydrant locations, and just today, just this afternoon, I got the, uh, sewer commission's letter of approval.
Yeah.
I knew that would be important.
Uh, on Mike's letter, it says the slabs are to remain, is that, was that the way that was gonna?
Yes.
Okay, I just, with the demo, I just didn't know.
We don't yet know who's gonna come in.
I didn't know the structure of the, uh, the furnaces and everything, so, okay.
Trying to leave it as, um, amenable to finding tenants as possible, trying to provide as much, uh, opportunity on the, on the site for someone coming in to maybe have to do modifications. We certainly expect to be back in front of this board, uh, on multiple occasions in the, hopefully, the near future, to be addressing tenant concerns as they come in, which could involve some additional railroad tracks and other things like that.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I guess I have an issue in terms of, I, it sounds like that fence is certainly not temporary. I mean, we could be here forever and we have no control over that. I don't want that to be a permanent condition, and we have no way of controlling that. I have no problem with them going ahead and doing this as part of the work, but it, but I would like to know at least by the time that, that they finish their work in their loading docks, if they don't have a tenant or whatever, that what's the plan for this long-term and how do we get it done? 'Cause I don't want that, especially if they were to, to allow people in there and they're functioning and using it, and I got a pit over here that, that's surrounded with a fence. I don't believe that's a safe situation, and I don't want, I don't want people coming in with trucks and, and dropping off and having that type of access where we have limited control and we have a temporary fence up to, to secure it.
Again, that's why I asked about the slab. I don't see, is there gonna be a, uh, an excavation somewhere?
When the building where the furnaces are and the gambrel portion get removed, it'll be taken down to the foundations, and there'll be a temporary, like, uh, fall hazard barriers to, you know, to secure the, uh, the, the, the site.
Okay, but there'll be no excavations or?
We have an answer for you. We're gonna be submitting another application on or about May 20th with new calculations for previous area, because we're gonna fill that in and pave it.
Then I would like to see that on the site plan, to say that you can't get an occupancy permit until a future site plan is submitted that provides for details as to what's gonna happen with the pit. So at least I have something that says you gotta do something with it before you can get an occupancy out there.
The memo, the plans refer to, um, securing that until the next phase of the project.
That, that's, that's on you. You can do, you can, you can do everything you want, you can start renting it out and say, "I haven't done the next phase of the project, and I've got nothing but a pit out there."
It's gonna be a, a secured basement.
And I don't want that as a permanent condition. I have no control over stopping you from having that as a permanent condition.
Yeah, on May 20th.
You can't fill it in at this time.
No, but I think what Joe wants is, he wants the plan to reflect that you're going to, that, if your plan is at your next phase, I'm assuming after you demo, you're then going to remove it and regrade it, is that?
Correct.
So, I think what Joe's point is, and that's all he wants, he, he'll give you the approval in theory, but he wants it on the plan, that it's going to be removed.
I'm giving an approval and saying you can't get an occupancy permit-
Yeah, it's gonna be removed.
-until, until you submit that next plan.
Yeah, that's all.
Then I have the next plan to say you've gotta complete that work.
Nobody's arguing here. First of all, I tried to answer your question about what's going on in the future, and gave you an answer that will be back in with a plan on May 20th. So a condition such as the one you're impose, that you seek to impose, is not of consequence to us, 'cause we're not gonna have an occupancy permit. Don't need it by then.
But that's, I didn't think it would be.
I don't know, so I don't think there's any, there's no argument or misunderstanding. I think that what, what you, we, we did first was to try and give you the demolition area on a plan shown to give you more comfort. As Jason just said, the plan is, he's already starting the calculations on the previous surfaces, which we're gonna have to come in with, so that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think it should be an issue.
So where would, where would we add the note? Just add that, to, make that number seven under the demolition notes?
Sign on May.
Yeah.
Can't be a condition of approval.
Well, it can, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is what, what's the plan gonna look like so I can sign it tomorrow morning when you get it done? If that's the vote, which I assume it's gonna be-
If you want to go, add it to that sheet.
Well, that's what I was trying to determine. Makes sense to me to do it that way.
That's acceptable to me. I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
As long as it's on the plan, then, then we have-
Yeah, so then just instead of having me sign Mylars tonight after a vote which we're not gonna be able to get entirely, we get a vote with conditions. That's the condition. So you put that note on the plan, bring me the Mylar tomorrow, and I'll sign it.
On what sheet? Again, on the demolition sheet.
Well, on, I would-
Note seven.
That was my suggestion. I don't know if that's amenable to the rest of the guys.
It's fine with me, as long as it's, as long as it's in the set, I don't, I don't think-
Yeah, just make that number seven on-
Larry, uh, would it make sense to then put a new revision date on all the plans? Have all the notes be the same on all sheets? 'Cause right now they're-
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. As, as long as you gotta go back and tweak it again.
Joe, can you just make the motion so that we have it on the record for Karen?
So I make a motion that, uh, we approve the plan subject to the addition of a note that stipulates that no occupancy permit, uh, will be obtained until such time as, is the, uh, the plan that shows the grading for the area, uh, the ver, the area of the former furnace is, is, is submitted, or is, is approved, I guess I should say.
They moved in second, any further discussion? There were none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous or four?
Just asked if you send them, if you could send a memo to the building department tomorrow morning to let them know that the plans have been approved.
Yeah, okay.
I sent a copy to Matt today, so, of the whole PDF.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right? We'll be back, we'll be back to see you with more plans about this property over the next few months. All right? Thank you.
You're doing on common tandem then, too?
Yeah.
Take out the foundation, and that's what Joe wants to say, 'cause he didn't want it just left open.
Do you have a, like, a simple signature block that you can submit at the plan?
No, I just do a, a signature line. There's only needs one.
It's only needs one.
I can sign them.
That's right, just one, one signature. Thank you.
You're lucky to see you.
Thank you. I'm here for a while.
One on each, on each page.
You're not getting rid of me that easy tonight.
Just do a signature line on each sheet.
Okay.
I'll go through and say it.
Yeah, I'll relocate myself.
Yeah. Don't go too far.
I won't go too far.
Karen, Pat stepped out.
You gonna take a little trip?
Certainly. Okay, next is, uh, discussion with, uh, Amazon, the Amazon site at six twelve Industrial Road. Ms. Lawrie?
All right, good evening. Um, my name is Carla Chaffey. I'm an attorney at Robinson &amp; Cole. I don't know if anyone remembers me, but I was back here about three years ago when Amazon, or what, the property owners, applied for amended site plan approval. Um, I'm just here to introduce our team that's here today. We have from Amazon, we have Daniel Reyes, who's a senior operations manager here in the Northeast, as well as Manish Anareddy, who's a senior manager, regional operational manager in the Northeast, as well as Jeff Cleveland, who is a manager of public policy in the Northeast. First, I just wanna thank you, one, for working with us back in 2016, and now for bringing us back before you, because, and sharing your concerns with us. Um, the, what we really want to do tonight is be specific and focused on the concerns that we have heard, um, through the planning office. Um, we hope to do, if it, in the, um, if it's amenable to the board and the chairman of the board, to please have a short presentation where we just address, you know, the issues that were raised, specifically traffic onsite, offsite, and some of the driver behavior issues that were raised. Um, we also have representatives from the property owners here, from Lincoln Properties, Allison Morgan, and, well, it's Chris George. So please, again, we'd, we'd love to have the opportunity to go through those issues and then, um, address any questions that you would like us to. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. As Carla mentioned, my name is Daniel Reyes. I'm a senior regional manager with Amazon Operations. Uh, first off, I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss these items and concerns. I want you all to know that I'm here as the most senior manager, as well as my counterpart, uh, 'cause we take the situation very seriously. Um, so, to get into, uh, the concerns at hand, I wanna give a, like, a small overview of what we do. Essentially, we're the last stop before the package gets to the customer in its, in its simplest form. Um, so the issues that were occurring at the site, uh, the, the first issue at hand was with, um, the items happening on Commercial Way. So there were a couple different instances that were occurring on Commercial Way that we identified as opportunities that needed to be addressed immediately. One was drivers pulling over because they weren't using their devices correctly, and the, and the second, because their loads were not loaded properly. So, we identified that as a behavioral issue, and we confirmed that the technology was not being used properly. The Wi-Fi in the building was tested, and all the drivers have been retrained on how to use that. Since that, uh, retraining, we haven't had a single incident of a driver pulling over for a Wi-Fi related issue. The second was with regard to the loads. Now, all the drivers load their own vehicles, so for any reason, if they were to be pulling over, it would be, it would be because they failed to do something properly themselves. So we addressed that behavior as well. For the last seventeen days, we've had one, in, in the last seventeen days, we've only had one incident on record, and the, the way we're able to guarantee that is, you can see in these Xs here, these positions that we've created, folks are gonna be there permanently going forward, so this issue doesn't happen anymore. The thought process that we have is, as they enter the facility, they're first gonna be contacted by someone recognizing, um, the necessity to discuss safety and protocol before entering the site. Inside of the facility, we'll also have folks that will be doing the same thing. Upon departing the station, they'll exit onto Commercial Way where we, where we have another person located, to ensure that no one is pulling over, and if they are, those, those behaviors are addressed immediately. And lastly, the, the, the utilization of the stop sign that's here on Industrial and Commercial, we're gonna have someone there also, so we ensure that, 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 that there's a stop and a check every day going forward. Um, we've seen significant progress, um, with this, and, and, and as I mentioned before, we're proud to say that we've only had one incident, but we know one incident is too much, and we recognize the impact that we've made to the, the, the neighboring businesses, and we plan to have this, uh, in place going forward, so we no longer have these issues. I wanted to share some, um, points of contact as well. Um, I've got a few copies here. Uh, I have also shared my contact information with, uh, Mr. Duncan. That's contact information for both myself and my counterpart, Manish. Manish's role is, uh, he's the most senior manager for all of our on-road operations, so we now have a team that's dedicated to managing these issues. Not only these folks that are listed here, but also more senior escalation points. So our contact information is there. I also plan on sending a follow-up email with all the contact information, so everybody does have that. Um, that is just about all that I had to cover with, with regard to what our plans are permanently going forward to address the issues in and around the site, um, and I'd, I'd like to field any questions that you may have at this point.
Uh, I got a couple, Joe, you got anything?
The only thing I had was, I would assume, based on the, on the, the drivers that you have and stuff, that there's, uh, there's probably some significant amount of turnover and stuff, so I would, I would hope that, you know, seeing how you've gone through training and retraining, that you make sure that as you move forward, that that training is on some sort of schedule, so that, you know, we're sure that those people are getting, getting trained, and we don't have new people that haven't gone through that process again.
No, that's, that's good feedback. We'll take that as a point. We addressed that as a, as an opportunity in, in our training, and we plan to have that in going forward. Thank you.
The only thing, I guess the, the other thing, and, and Pat, you may be able to answer this, I mean, obviously, they've said this, have you noticed a change recently up there? So, you know, you're up there certainly more often than I am.
So, what they did immediately is they hired two police details from six, I believe, it was six in the morning till noon type. And their sole role at the time was to ensure that they stopped at both stop signs. Then shortly thereafter, they added what I would consider a flag people that stood at the stop signs and told them, I don't really know what they told them, but obviously they would put their hand up to where the cruiser was, which, they were hot cruisers, you really couldn't miss them, um, and told them that they had to stop. Have I noticed a difference from six to twelve? Yes. Once the police left, the flags are no longer there. So please don't make it sound like those people are there from the time that you're open to the time that you're closed, 'cause that's not an accurate statement at all.
Yeah, I, I-
Okay, so at twelve, they packed up. So after twelve, it seemingly goes back to the old ways. To me, I don't care that they're there. I have more of an objection that they should be forced to close the driveway under Commercial and stay on their own property. Because the reality of it is, they're disruptive to the rest of the businesses up there, and it wasn't that way until they came. Now, good for, you know, good for you guys that, that you've implemented some changes. To me, it's too little, too late. And, and the problem, to me, if you hadn't hired a police detail for a solid two and a half, three weeks, that really should be an indication of how bad they really were to the businesses and the people who try, who, by the way, rely on Commercial, 'cause it's a, it's a dead-end road, okay? We don't have the benefit of going around their building like they do to get to, you know, to get to the properties that we work at. So, like I said, I don't have a problem that they're there. I would just assume that they close off the driveway, though, and stay on their own property, which, by the way, they just completed, uh, that side of the building, and they finally put parking in, which they were supposed to do back, uh, at one of the other site planes. I don't remember if it was sixteen or seventeen, so that's finally been done.
Yeah, that was for Annexer, I think.
I'm not really sure, but I can tell you that I believe it was completed beginning of this year at some time, maybe January, February, and I can't tell you that I've really seen any effective cars parking there. They do have some spots designated for Annexer, but I don't notice that they're parking there.
We actually finished the work at the end of last year before the winter paid.
Like I said, I couldn't remember exactly.
And then we striped it this year, so I think, and then Annexer signage was put up, so I-
Just recently, I think, within the last two weeks.
Yes.
But again, to me, it's, it's enough of a drive aisle, enough of a driveway, that clearly their delivery trucks can exit without, you know, staying on their own property. That's, again, I don't have a problem that they're there, and good for you if you need to really hold someone that doesn't understand what a stop sign is, 'cause the rest of us understand what a stop sign is, that you need to put a flag in there to tell them. Good for you, if that's the way your business model is, then, okay. But to the rest of us, I just assume you stay in your own site, that's all.
Well, actually-
And I don't think, I think a lot of the tenants that aren't here tonight, or the people that are up there, had the same feeling, to be frank with you.
Well, just to speak to your point about staying on site, I know Daniel has one more point to add, um, about a parking area that's going to be set up, so in the case that everything we just talked about, drivers still have a tendency to want to stop on Commercial Way, which will be stopped as soon as it happens, we're rerouting them back onto the site.
Yeah, so, um, those, those same parking spaces, I think, that you're discussing in this area here, we've identified those as temporary spaces. In the event that a driver does have an exception where they need to pull in, or they need to make an adjustment, we're going to be, we're going to be instructing them to park in those locations to make those adjustments. If those adjustments are gonna exceed any type of wait time beyond five minutes, we're gonna ask them to pull back around in the building and work with their teams to expedite the load out of the facility. And this person that's in this location will have direct line of sight to ensure that that's happening.
I guess my other point to this, there is no, there is no downside to you staying on your own property and coming alongside your building, coming down to your stop sign, and then taking a right onto Industrial. You don't really need to come on to Commercial to take the same left onto Industrial, is all, is my whole point.
Okay.
Well, I, I think one of the points of our filing in 2016, which, which I can speak to, was that, you know, we appreciated working with your board very much, and Mr. Duncan with, you know, planning the most efficient layout and circulation.
For yourself, though.
But, while we're here, and we admit that there were issues.
But there were issues, there were issues.
No, wait, well, let's, let's hold up one person, and it'll be recognized by the board. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and so, we're now making it work, and we're taking every step that we can to make that efficient flow work the way it was intended to. So, so that's our goal here tonight, is to share with you those plans, and to share with you the adjustments we've made offsite and onsite. So that's the point of continuing this discussion. You know, we had that approval in 2016, because we all sat down and thought about, you know, the best circulation possible for this site. There were some issues, but we still think that's the best possible, you know, layout for efficiency for everyone, not just for us.
Okay. When you did come before us before with the number of parking spaces you had for your trucks, we've seen no problem whatsoever. But what you have for trucks and parking area is way beyond what we ever thought of. There's no way that we would've passed that site plan knowing the amount of trucks. Again, we went by your site plan, the amount of trucks and parking spaces in your site plan, and we figured that's, there was, and there was no problem. You didn't present this in your traffic plan that you're gonna have one hundred and thirty-five trucks running up and down the road. So, that's something, yes, you presented the site plan for what you wanted, but we didn't, you didn't give us the information of what you were gonna do. Because we figured what you were gonna have is on the existing parking spaces on the site.
I appreciate that comment. I think, you know, we did submit a traffic count study at the time, and I don't think it's an efficient use to go through that line by line right now. We, the overflow, I think, onto Commercial Way is what's really bothering everyone right now. And that was not caused by a lack of parking on the site. Actually, we'll talk about that. We actually have some excess parking. And now that this issue on Commercial Way is being addressed, we're going to use that space that's on-site, we think, in a much more efficient way to keep those drivers off of Commercial Way unless they're just moving out. So, and Daniel, did you wanna talk about parking a little bit?
Yeah, so, yeah, over the last two weeks, we've done observations and audits during our busiest times, between the hours of six and eight AM, where we have the most vehicles on-site. And of the one hundred and ninety-six spaces that we have on the site that we're currently using, at its peak, we've seen only about one hundred and forty-seven to one hundred and forty-eight being used. So, we still do have excess parking locations. That's before the additions of the spots that we currently have now in the back of the facility. So, we do have parking to ensure that drivers are not pulling over on Commercial Way, and we're using our lots appropriately.
Joseph Anthony Alston, on behalf of the property owner, you hold the equipment. So, if the spaces have been there all along, why were the trucks parking on Commercial Way? What is it about this process that has driven the trucks onto the roadway and off of their property? That's my first question. What is it? Is it a decision that was made by the owner-operator of the property to not have the vehicles that are servicing that building use that building's property? As an example, this town has very strict regulations on drive-throughs, and it is for purpose to keep commercial traffic off of the side streets and streets when that traffic is engaged in a commercial activity, which is what's going on here. So, what you have is, you have a long queue at the Dunkin' Donuts, so to speak, with the cars going out onto the street, which no one would put up with in this town. So, what you've got is you've got very major taxpayers in the town being asked to carry the burden of either their poor planning or their inability to, well, it's not their employees. It's my understanding, they have as many as twelve separate subcontractors who don't work for them. They just service them. So, they're not there. We've had, on our own examinations, we've talked to some of the truck drivers who told us that they use our porta potty, which is up at our construction site, because there's no place for them to use a facility in the building that is asking them to service them. So, I, you know, there were other ancillary issues. So, again, I don't understand, and on behalf of my particular client, we don't understand why there is anyone parking on Commercial when they made a presentation to you that showed that they have enough parking spaces, and by their own estimate, they have enough parking spaces. So, I would think that the next logical thing would be to do is to have some kind of strict enforcement about those trucks out there. Because they're gonna, what's gonna happen is those drivers are gonna seek the path of least resistance, as is the property owner. And I know that, 'cause I represent enough property owners to know how things are done. And so, what's gonna happen is in three months, we're gonna be back out here. So, I think you're gonna be very emphatic with this particular user that those commercial vehicles need to be parked on their property, not our public ways.
You know, I think you put the nail on the head when you said the drivers are gonna take the path of least resistance unless they're instructed to do otherwise. So, you know, this was a behavioral issue. It was really easy for drivers to just pull out and say, "I'm gonna stop here, unload. This is what everyone else is doing." It became a trend. And then I think that the steps that we've taken since that time are designed to address that kind of mentality of, "I'm gonna do the easiest thing and pull over on Commercial Drive."
I've been up there half a dozen times myself since the last planned board meeting. I was there the morning after. Again, I cannot understand why you do not wanna use the area for them to exit alongside that building and exit out onto National Street. That seems the most legitimate, easiest way to solve the problem. You're gonna have, you're gonna have these people, again, it's a time thing. I don't know how many trucks come in in a clip. I'm sure you have a certain number that come in, then twenty minutes later, so many other ones come in. If you're pushing them, and I understand you're in business to move them, and they don't set up, and they're not pulling over Commercial Way, they're gonna be pulling over somewhere where your two men are. They're gonna be pulling down on Brit Street, or 109, or somewhere. And if you have that area where you can queue them right down there, they have squats to pull, stop, readjust their loads or whatever they do, and then go out and run onto Industrial Drive, I don't see the problem. And that would be the most sensible way to solve this problem, and you'd eliminate two guys.
I know, I appreciate the feedback. I think there's opportunity, and there are plans for us to use that parking appropriately for those exceptions that-
I mean, they striped it, and they coned it off. It seemed ridiculous to do it.
Yeah, it's coned off to prevent your drivers from using-
Using that-
-the general circulation, so.
Can you show where the land area is to pull over?
Yeah, so, this is the proximate area of the exit here. And just behind this, it's a left turn only out of the facility. Just behind this portion here on this lane, there are parking spaces that are here. So, in the event that when the drivers pull out, if they do need to stop for whatever reason, these spots are available to them.
So, they're supposed to pull into one of those parking stalls?
In the event that they need to pull over, yes.
So, you're gonna remove the cones?
That's something I'll need to discuss with the landlord and the property owner.
Because you have the parking, you have the parking areas they can pull in, also the file lane, which they can go down. So, I mean, the file lane is to make room for the file trucks. It's not that you can't use the file lane to drive down.
Well, park in and queue up.
Right, right.
So, that's-
So, is it your, is it your understanding, then, that it was the property owner that put the cones up?
I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. I need to follow up. I, yeah, I don't wanna provide a definitive answer to something I'm not sure about.
The property owners are saying they didn't put the cones up.
What's that? They didn't?
No.
Oh, okay.
I didn't think so.
I didn't, yes.
The one thing I wanna say is, yeah, they have one hundred and forty-nine parking spots, but they're not telling you how many delivery trucks are coming through there between the six and eight, which is much greater than the one hundred and forty-nine. And like I said, to me, closing off the driveway onto Commercial and letting them stay on their own property, to me, would serve a great, a much higher benefit to the other businesses that have been there longer than them. That's just my two cents.
Again, I don't think closing, I don't think closing it off is the answer, because you're gonna have trailers coming out there, and that's the way they wanna-
Trailers can swing around the building.
They would've come out. It's having those, the drivers in the vans would down the thing. If they had that one man there, he could just direct them all down, and they could stay and do anything they want all day long. I don't, you know, we don't care. It's getting off, getting off, stopping on Commercial Way, stopping on Industrial Road, or stopping anywhere else that they're gonna stop to do it. That's what we wanna eliminate. And that would be the best way to do it, is to send them down that strip of the property. It's simple.
I think we're in agreement with that. I mean, it had not been done before, and the plan now is to dedicate it spaces to pull over if you need to. We're hoping that all the steps we do beforehand, you're not gonna need to pull over. But you know what? If you do, we've got a space for you to do it.
Okay.
So.
I think that they'll be exiting onto Commercial, which is going straight down, you know, stopping at the stop sign, onto Commercial, making their left, and not stopping whatsoever on Commercial, coming down to the next stop sign, making a right, and then moving on.
Yeah, they'll be going down alongside the-
It's just constant flow, but no traffic.
They'll be going along the side of the building. Actually, they won't go onto Commercial, they'll be going right onto Industrial.
Right, but I think it's good to have both accesses.
I definitely, I don't believe, I don't believe in closing the access, because if I was a guy driving the trailer, that's the way I'd wanna come out.
They have to load in the squats, then they can go down alongside.
But alongside, I see no problem with that. Again, as long as it's not abused. And if you have to keep that employee there to make sure that they take the left and go down that way, then that's what you have to do.
That's a commitment we're making with having this person dedicated to that area.
Any other, anything else? Yes, Leo.
Well, just as a matter of point today, there were no police officers. There was one flag guy down the bottom, nobody up the top. And my tractor trailer had to slam on its brakes, 'cause they started whipping up. And that was today.
We should be clear about the time that we're being here.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, we have folks in these positions, as mentioned, between the hours of seven and noon, where we have all of our delivery vans departing. So, if that was a miss, we will definitely address that behavior.
That would definitely happen today.
No, and I don't doubt that, and we'll address that behavior.
I had talked to one of the police officers on the detail, and one of the cars went through the stop sign, almost hit him, so. It's not that they're paying attention, so that's it. Now, there's another question I have, is whether you're parking at Stop and Shop right now?
Yeah, we're-
The old Stop and Shop.
The old Stop and Shop, correct.
Eventually, and hopefully for Mr. Farford, that's gonna be filled someday with a business, and you're gonna be gone. So, I hope somewhere, in the back of your mind, you're planning on putting those vehicles somewhere.
Yes, we're in the process of building plans to move from that location, correct.
Okay, I mean, it's, once, again, hopefully, there's something that goes in there, and you're gonna be on luck.
Understood.
Yes, Larry?
So, from the board's standpoint, and just so I can get a better handle on scheduling things, I assume you may wanna monitor this for a month or two, and then-
Yeah, I'd like to have them come back in a month.
In a month, yep. All right, let me see what-
I'd like to see them institute that. I think, you know, as Babe was saying, we'd like to see you use your existing driveway and exit out onto Industrial to the extent possible, have your drivers do that, and keep that person out there during the hours that you've indicated, and monitor that, and I'd like to see where that takes us. And hopefully, that clears up the problem, but at least we, you know, I think we've made a good step in the fact that we've at least got people to contact now, which had been difficult before, so, you know.
Again, going back to the closing of the exit, the property owners have other tenants who we have no problem with, and you hate to see them being penalized, too, for something.
No, I don't wanna, I don't wanna permanently close it. I, but I think they, as they have access, just as they had teaching, they should be teaching their drivers as part of that, stay on the property, exit out onto Industrial. Some of them are going to screw it up, I guarantee you. I understand that. They're gonna go out onto, they're gonna go out onto Commercial. But if we can minimize the ones that are going out onto Commercial, I think that helps us, too. So, between that and having somebody out there, hopefully, over the next month, we can see a significant improvement, that it won't be as much of an issue.
So, you thinking literally the first meeting in June, or do you wanna do it on the second meeting in June? First meeting's on the fourth.
What's the worst pleasure? I don't-
The second meeting's on the eighteenth, so.
Second one's fine.
Second's fine. Yeah, give them, again, give them some time. I'll be there.
No, give me some time to have a baby and go.
And thank you for the time. We will get that issue addressed, sir. Thank you for the feedback, and we'll continue to improve.
Yes, ma'am, great.
Hi.
Hi.
I actually have a question about the vans that are parked at the old Stop and Shop plaza.
Yeah.
We live over on East Charles Street, which is behind, like, Gold's Gym. He walks through the woods. So, I just have a question about the process that the drivers go through when they get to their van, they pick up the van. Because it sounds like what they do, in order to locate their van, is they're sounding off the car alarm. I wanted to find which van is theirs. Now, on Saturday and Sunday mornings, it's a little disruptive.
I understand.
You know, so I'm just curious. Am I guessing that?
That's not the correct process. We should have assigned vehicles with markings, so the drivers can identify their vehicles.
Shouldn't remember where they parked at last.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, and so, we will take that as an action item to get that addressed and communicate that behavior.
Okay, great. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Anything else on the board?
No.
Yeah, I thank you for coming in, trying to take a proactive action on it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you for the time. And you all have my contact information. That's my personal cell phone number. You can contact me at any time. We'll address any issues you have.
They still have those Jersey barriers standing.
See you after the baby.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time.
We had one in here today, so you can bring them.
Oh, I don't think I'm gonna be ready by June nineteenth. No, I'm staying home.
They don't need that for the trucks.
There's a talent.
Businesses up there, like the ones right behind you?
They represent the property.
I find that's the black ass.
No.
They own the building.
They own the building. That's why she said that was on our call, that was on our phones.
We manage the buildings.
Manage.
Sorry.
Same thing.
I'd like to hold it.
Sure.
Are you sure? Oh, thanks, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You have my contact info, all right?
Yeah, so, you okay to drive home?
Oh, I'm fine. Thanks, everyone.
Watch, watch the wheel.
Okay, we got a ZBA variance. Oh, Joe, you're here for that, too?
I might as well hang around.
He's having so much fun.
For, we'll do yours, Silver Hill Road and Congress first. How's that, Joe?
Sounds wonderful.
Do you want me to read my-
That's the one on the corner with the road that goes through?
Yeah. Do you want me to read my report real quick? ZBA variance request, Vineyard Point Ventures, Silver Hill Road at Congress Street, map twenty-two, block sixty-four, one oh two. The applicant requests a variance to construct a single-family dwelling on the subject property, which was established as a surveyed lot via a single-lot definitive plan that was approved by this board on twelve nineteen twenty eighteen. That definitive plan established for the first time surveyed property lines for the subject property, and also established the fifty-foot layout for Congress Street, a forty-foot layout for Silver Hill Road, and a thirty-foot layout for the curved portion of Silver Hill Road. Those three streets encompass the property or encircle the property. Specifically, the subject property is a triangular-shaped lot, and by virtue of fronting on three streets, has three front yards. This variance request is to reduce the thirty-foot front yard setback along the curved portion of Silver Hill Road, which forms the easterly property line. The thirty-foot front yard setbacks from both Congress Street to the west and the straight portion of Silver Hill Road to the north are being met. The applicant seeks a twenty-three-point-five-nine-foot variance from thirty-foot easterly front yard setback, or over a seventy-eight percent reduction. The curved portion of Silver Hill Road is not a paper street, as referenced in the application. It is a disused public way by virtue of it currently being impassable. Reducing the setback from thirty feet to six-point-four-one, as requested, seems excessive to me and not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. A fifty percent variance from the easterly property line would be comparable to a side yard setback of fifteen feet, the same as if it were a normal corner lot at two intersection streets. Therefore, that's my recommendation, that you send a favorable report to ZBA to grant a fifteen-foot variance from the easterly property line. Take it, Joe.
Mr. Anthony Alston.
We placed the house where we thought it was the most appropriate location, based on the fact that the disused portion of Silver Hill, we presume, will eventually be discontinued and thereby create more space. If it isn't, then I guess we pay the price of traffic going by the back of the- If it isn't, then I guess we pay the price of traffic going by the back of the house. It was laid out there to fit into the neighborhood the best way. Tough lot, we all know that, we've had a lot of discussion about it in the past. That was the reasoning, that was the location that my client thought would be best suited for the house. Hence, to build a house on that property that's more in character with the neighborhood up there, nothing overpowering the lot. And again, it's a question of trying to put it in where they thought it would be best situated, try to move it towards the area that doesn't get any traffic, and there is no direct neighbor there, it's an open field, closed field.
I guess one of the things to address that, that was a little disconcerting for me, is that instead of showing the footprint based on the architectural plans that we had all talked about before, they're just showing a 44 by 36-foot box. So I really doubt that they're gonna build a square building 44 by 36, which, if we put, figured out the footprint, it would help their application because they're probably not gonna need all this.
I'm not the builder.
I know. I just thought I'd throw that in.
I guess I sort of agree with Larry. I, I mean, you know, if, this would effectively preclude the town from ever having the opportunity to open that road up again. I don't know that we would ever go through and discontinue the road, considering that's actually the frontage for certain people up there, and I don't know that I'm gonna turn them into a non-conforming use. That's actually, that was actually, the frontage was there because the other section never, never existed. The actual existing is for those houses.
Those houses on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good point.
So I sort of agree with Larry.
Won't be discontinued, good point.
Yeah, I don't see.
And if the town ever wanted open it, I don't want this owner coming back and saying, "Oh, it's gonna be right in my backyard, it's gonna be six feet away from my house." You know, I think 15 is a reasonable number. I mean, I think the size of that house is bigger than it needs to be. The owner of this property's house is much smaller than what they're putting in up there, which is two houses down, so.
You'd go more with the side, treat it like.
The side yard.
The side yard. I will relay that to my client, and before I go to the board meeting. I understand.
Yeah, I tried to make a positive recommendation.
I saw it this afternoon, five minutes before, before I left the office.
Well, we finally got internet, so I could send it to.
I definitely agree that. I think if you took a different look at the box of the house, and you stayed in line with more of a 15-foot, knowing that you have three, three side properties.
Treat that one as a side yard.
Because I think, will the road ever get reestablished? Probably not. Is it gonna get discontinued? No, it can't.
I didn't realize that.
So.
It's not gonna get discontinued under those circumstances.
No, so, but again, if we treated it as a simple side, 15 would seem reasonable.
Your recommendation is going to the zoning board with that, and I will return to my clients and let them know what this board thinks.
Did you make that as a motion, Joe?
Certainly will. Make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board using 15-foot side yard variance, or 15-foot distance, treating it as a side yard would be acceptable.
I didn't find the last footprint you and I saw.
I know.
To go back and put it.
I didn't hear him, I'm sorry. This is blocked, I can't hear.
We gave John a chance to do it tonight.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sending a favorable?
Favorable based on the 15, not the 6.
Yes.
Can we do?
unanimous of four.
Can we do number eight next?
I have Esposito also.
Oh, you're a busy guy, Joe.
Eli's got these, this one, because I'll be someplace else Thursday night.
ZBA variance, Paul Esposito Highland Street, currently it's MAP 39, Block 0, Lot 38. Applicant requests a variance to subdivide the existing lot. Subject property consists of a conforming 44,477 square foot lot in an RB zone. That district is a single-family zone, requires a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet per lot, 100 foot of frontage, 90, I'm sorry, 100 foot of width and 90 foot of frontage. Specifically, the proposed subdivision would create three new lots, all of which would comply with width and frontage requirements. Proposed Lot 36A on the plan that's attached, however, would only contain 14,262 square feet of lot area rather than the full 15,000. Proposed Lot 36B and 36C would exceed the 15,000 square foot. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. You may remember this came.
This one came in last time, but they didn't show us any detail at all.
Right, there wasn't a plan, there wasn't a plan to refer to, and it didn't specify what the variance was for, because you couldn't read the plan. Now they fixed all that.
I don't have a problem with this, I don't think it'll be noticeable, to be frank with you. But again, they had no detail the last time. I'll make a motion for favorable on this one. It was easier now.
I know, it's right.
Seconded by Joe.
Yeah, I don't think it'll notice.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
If not, all those in favor?
I'll be opposed.
Unanimous of four.
Good night, Joe.
Good night, Joe.
Did you need my letter?
Yeah, I'm not on the inside.
Okay, we got Field Pond Road.
Yeah, Matthew Zicky, ZBA variance request, 16 Field Pond, MAP 23, Block 156, Lot 16. The applicant requests a variance to build a deck that would encroach on the 25-foot zoning setback from wetlands on the subject property. Section 2.4.8, the bylaw requires 25-foot hard zoning setback from any wetland, stream, or detention area. In this case, the developer had submitted an application to the Conservation Commission back in April of 2018 for a new house on this lot, at which time was made, he was made aware of the 25-foot zoning setback from wetlands. The developer subsequently repositioned the proposed house so that it would not encroach, because originally the house itself encroached. However, that repositioning was only minimally enough for the house itself, and didn't take into account any decks that would normally be expected off of the rear of the entrance. Now they're coming back, and funniest thing, they want to build the deck. So I, recommending unfavorable due to self-created hardship. They knew, they knew what the requirements were, they went to the trouble to move the house just barely enough to get through Concom, but now, you know, the people want a deck.
Theoretically, the.
This is the new subdivision.
It's gotta be.
Yeah.
It has to be.
Yeah, because it's got a subject system.
Right.
So the developer built the house, and then they sold it, now the person who bought it wants to put a deck on it.
Yeah. So what did they think was gonna happen? Would they do that rear door, that many feet off of the ground?
I don't think that, again, I'm looking at the person who ultimately bought it, who I can guarantee you had no idea.
Well, maybe not.
That there was a 25-foot setback from the conservation. He bought the house and said, "Oh, I want a deck." And they're like, "Oh, no, you can't." He's not, he's not the same as the developer.
Doesn't matter, this is a new lot, and there's no way that this should be given.
Ah, you know what? I feel bad. It's a homeowner, the poor son of a gun wants to put on a 10 by 12. It's not like he's asking you to put on a 40 by, you know what I'm saying? He wants to put on a little deck, the son himself. I'm just saying.
Well, he should go back to the.
He shouldn't have bought the house, but that's a different discussion.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
He should go back to the.
Make a motion, we send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board.
I'll second that.
Actually, they could reconfigure.
And move.
And, go ahead.
And you got Joe and John?
Yes.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'll be opposed, I mean, the poor guy wants to put a deck on.
Three in favor, one opposed.
But I need my letter, please.
Certainly.
He could actually change the size and the shape of the deck.
Yeah, they could too.
End up with a bigger deck, but not.
He could put it down the corner and pretty much get it in if he wanted to.
Exactly.
Motion for adjournment, unless you have anything?
Yeah, does anybody else have anything to forward? Take a motion to adjourn, seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Good night.